Meaning whether you're looking at a computer screen or on your smartphone or tablet, it will automatically redesign it so that it fits that screen size. And then each school will now have its own sub-site. And I will show you around. So this is the homepage. This is where our news and information will live, and then down here is the calendar. And clicking on this will take you to the full district calendar. One thing I want to point out is we now have a staff login, whereas currently anything staff resource-wise is just open for everybody to see. This will make it so that they have to have a login to see certain pages, and we can hide a lot of our staff resources and make them not so public facing. Next to it here is our quick links panel. These are all links that go to outside websites that we use the most, like campus parent portal where we send all of our enrollment and that sort of thing. So that's an easy way to find that. The purchase event tickets, so any sporting event tickets you want to buy, those are all easy to find. This will be on the top of every sub-site and every homepage. And then up here we have our schools. So one thing that's different from the last one is we had five school sites on the last website, and this one will have seven. So that makes it so that Early Learning, Capoja, Lincoln, the middle school and the high school are now separate, so they'll have their own identities on the web. And then we also gave Community Learning and Central Square its own sub-site. So that'll house all of that stuff, and then the CLC will still have theirs. And another thing I wanted to do was, we had originally talked about making an enrollment sub-site too, but we decided instead just to make the enrollment page easier to navigate. So now the first thing you see is click here to enroll really big. So we're trying to make it easy for people. And over here we have our virtual open houses that we started during the pandemic, and now we just keep them updated so anybody can go in and look at them at any time. And an interactive map if you don't know which school boundary your elementary student falls into. And then down here we have just an easy way, if you have questions, if you can't figure out enrollment, to get ahold of Erica. You can make a virtual meeting with her right here. And then the last thing that I want to show you is we wanted to make it easier for parents to find all the information they need at the beginning of school year. So on, let's go back to the homepage. There's two ways that you can get there. Right here, this will be the first button on every subsite's page, 2022-23 school year. And then up here, there is a current school year information page. They both go to the same spot. And on this page is links to everything that you might need for the school year: handbooks, learning plans, school supplies, health and safety information. And this, every July, will get updated with the new information, and then throughout the year if things change. So yeah, that's all I wanted to show you today. Any questions, comments?
Great. It looks great.
That's a huge improvement.
Yeah.
I really like that.
Yeah. So the plan was to kind of make everything so that it's on the top part of the page. So you only need to scroll down for things if you know you're looking for something that would be down there. So being able to find everything easily.
I love the quick links. I know that I would often look for the school cafe and the parent portal link.
The attendance line.
That's been noted, I'll write that down.
I just want to, if I can, just commend Danette. She has just done a phenomenal job. We, like she said, researched some companies, and once we landed on final site, she really kind of took it, took the reins and just did a tremendous amount of work researching and different things to make it really user-friendly for the people that are going to be shopping with us or our customers. And then also the people that are going to be navigating also the website, you know, on the backend, because we felt really limited in what we could do with our current site. And so we just wanted to have so much more and just make it just look so much nicer and so much easier to use. But she really worked with all of our directors and all of our building leaders just to make sure that their information was updated. So as we're kind of migrating stuff over and making sure everything is updated and ready to go, which is a lot of work. There's a lot of information in there. And there's times that she and I would be clicking on pages, and we'd be like, ooh, that doesn't go anywhere. And so, you know, she'd be in there and she'd get it all corrected right away. So I just, she just did a fantastic job.
Yeah. You can tell it's a labor of love. It turned out really great.
And I know there will be some professional development and things that she'll be supporting to help get people up to speed. But one of the things she shared with me is just how nice it is that before, people could really make mistakes that impacted the website kind of broadly. And so now it's, she's able to give more freedom, which is what you also want schools to have, to be able to put things on their webpages and such too.
One thing that I really like about this is the backend is called the drag-and-drop editor, meaning you can pull whatever sort of widget or item you want to use onto the screen, and you can see it in real time as you change it, what it'll look like. And right now, it's a lot of just typing it in. You kind of have to change some coding if you know what you're doing, and then you have to make it live before you can go back and see how it looks. So with this one, you don't have to do that, which is nice.
Simple and quick. Like when we were doing the results for the superintendent stuff, right? I remember you had some late nights, the both of you. And then just a quick question for the public, because I went to Target this weekend, and I saw that school supplies are already out, much to the horror of my 12-year-old, who was like, oh, it's not time! So then he said, I wonder if our page is ready? And I said, oh, I don't know, buddy, but it sounds like...
Friday.
Yeah, Friday it will be. That's awesome. Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, good job.
All right. Well, that was great. On to public listening session submissions. We didn't have any. Again, a reminder, our information is on the website, and there is a link where you can send in to come or to submit a topic. And the first meeting of the month, we are here at 4:15, ready and willing to listen to the public. And then Vice Chair Roche. We have highlighted some of our committee of the whole items.
Prior to each of our board meetings, we have committee of the whole meetings, which is where a lot of the business and the work of being a board member is done. And we just want to highlight some of the things that we talk about in there so that we're bringing that to the public. We have seen and reviewed the Student Rights and Responsibilities Handbook and the Family Handbook. That'll be rolled out for this next school year, which is exciting. I know many of us feel like we just started summer break, but the work of getting back to school, we are beginning that work as we speak now. I also just want to highlight, we'll discuss this later in the meeting as well, but school board election resolutions. Putting that language in place, and August 2nd, we will have open for filing for running for school board. So if you want to get engaged and more involved in your school board and the schools in our community, that is a great way to do it. You can invest a whole $2 to put your name in the ring to be here and do the work with us as we have been doing. And then we did committee updates and have begun discussing some things about a community survey. So that was the bulk of our time.
Great, thank you. All right, next is Dr. Zembrino providing the highlights.
Thank you. It was fun to get to talk about the district and things going on. I apologize if my, I was getting over a bug here, so hopefully my voice will hold up for a few minutes here. One thing we had shared with our community before, but want to remind folks, is that we have free summer meals. Just looking for the slideshow to slide deck there. The U.S. Department of Agriculture has funded free breakfast and lunch for all students or children ages 1 to 18. And we are making those available Monday through Thursday at the Secondary and Capoja. Not seeing the slide deck, we'll see if... Can see it on the, on the computer on the other screen there, but I'll just keep going while we work to get that. So breakfast is served 8 to 9, Monday to Thursday, and then lunch 11:30 to 12:30. It is free for the kids. If adults want to take advantage, they can get a breakfast for $3 or a lunch for $5. And that'll be going through August 11th at the Secondary site and through the 4th at Capoja. We also have preschool registration open, so registration is open, and I love this, ages 2.5, 2 and 1/2, 4. So we do love to get them started early, and it is, preschool is free for our four-year-olds. There's a half-day or full-day option. And then there are scholarships available for students 3 and under. So if they're, it's a fee-based, but if they have need for support, we're able to support them with some scholarships. We talked, we're kind of in this interesting, like, we're getting into summer, but I did want to call out some of the end-of-year celebrations that we had. So we did have 176 students graduate from our high school as well as the Community Learning Center. And I know a number of you all on the board, and I was able to participate in both of those commencement ceremonies, and just shared it with my 90-day entry plan, just how amazing our kids are. And you really got to see that, really with all of the end-of-year activities, the recognition and awards that our students had won. So just want to congratulate our graduates and wish them the very best in their pursuits. Some other fun things that happened at the end of the year, there was a 5K for our 5th graders at Lincoln Center, so they got to blow off some end-of-year steam and have some fun. We had, you know, the, the spring was kind of a dicey weather situation, but it seemed like it did work out for, not so much for spring sports, so sorry for older students, but a lot of those fun end-of-year days turned out to have some great weather. They had shaved ice to cool down after running. Also, I see Principal Bree Toye is here today, had a, had fun getting to watch the end-of-years celebration. There we go, got that slide deck working. At Capoja, and so they have a really fun, the parents put on a great event. Students got to play games and, you know, just interact and have that last hurrah with each other. But what was really neat is at the end of the day, our 5th graders got to line up and walk the entire block. They had a police and fire escort, and were cheered on by staff and the younger students. So getting to feel that kind of closure and being on top at Capoja, so really neat event there. Also had a kindergarten graduation celebration, and with that ceremony, the friends and families were invited, the students' names were read, and I wish I could, I did not get to hear this, but they did share what everyone wants to do when they grow up. So it'll be fun to see how those line up with their, with their actual futures. And then they all received a diploma and a class ring pop. So, a ring pop. We've got summer learning going on. We have a kindergarten camp that's going to start August 1st, just runs the 1st to the 4th, and that's 8:30 to 11:00 a.m. at Lincoln, and then 9 to 11:30 at Capoja. There's information on our website. But it's just a great chance for our incoming kinders to get familiar with school, learn how to get lunch, and navigate the cafeteria, those types of pieces. The Elementary Summer Learning Academy is running June 20th to the 28th, 8:45 to 12:45. And there's still time to get registered, so that's been up and running now for about a week. But if families are interested, they can still get their kids signed up. There's free busing. Students are provided with breakfast and lunch, they're doing STEM projects, really just kind of summer fun learning, so an opportunity there to still get signed up. We have the Packer Preview about to start, that's July 11th to the 21st, Monday to Thursday for our incoming 6th graders. Having been a middle school principal, I did a lot of support for that transition. I remember asking the parents and the kids, who's more nervous? I think truthfully, the parents always came in as a little more nervous about that transition, but a great opportunity for the kids to come in, you know, meet new friends, learn how to do the lockers, navigate the big new buildings. So hopefully we'll get great participation there. And then for our 7th and 8th graders, the 11th to the 24th of July, Monday to Thursday, they have an opportunity to come in and do some extension, some extended learning they've got again. Trying to make it fun, so they're doing some research, an introduction to World War II. They're learning the physics of roller coasters, as well as within, learning some math concepts and finding Pythagoras. So great, hands-on, engaged, summer learning going on throughout the district. As always, you can follow us on social media. We're on Facebook, Instagram, Twitter, and LinkedIn. And just a reminder that next week, the 4th, the week of the 4th, there's no summer learning going on. July 11th, the middle school, we mentioned that summer learning begins, and as well as our extended school year for our students receiving special services. And then for our community members who tap into Central Square, that site will be closed July 11th to 16th for some annual cleaning and routine maintenance. As always, our meeting materials are available online, and we appreciate everybody tuning in and engaging with our board. Thank you.
Great, thank you so much. I love to see those pictures of all the end-of-year things.
Yeah.
It was, it was a busy couple of weeks for everybody. Moving on to our consent items, just a reminder that consent items are items that come through each meeting, that we don't need much discussion on, including bills payable, claims, and our staffing report. Do I have a motion for the approval of our consent items?
So moved.
Thank you, Wendy. Second?
Second.
Great, thanks. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? That motion carries. We have a lot of policies to approve tonight, so if you remember, policy 208 requires policies that are under review to be placed on two consecutive school board meetings, and then we look for approval on the 3rd, and that is tonight. So do I have a motion to approve the 33 policies that are listed in the agenda?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Great, thanks. And all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? And I forgot to ask about discussion? Great, that motion carries. Okay. That was a lot of policies. Thanks for the work on that. Now we're moving to our business items. Looking for a motion to approve the FY '23, is that fiscal year?
It is.
Fiscal year '23 budget. If you remember, we have been talking about this for a few months now, so that we're here at the approval time. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Appreciate it. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? That motion carries. Looking for a motion to approve the Identity and Access Management Resolution, otherwise known as Iowa. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Thanks. Thank you, Wendy. Thanks, Monica. Any discussion?
Just say for anyone who wonders what that is, that just gives me a superintendent authority to go into the state systems with the Department of Education, the Professional Education Licensing Standards Board, or Pelsby who does teacher licensure, and then the Office of Higher Ed. So lots of different things we need to approve as a district, and some of those I do myself with this authority, and then also able to delegate to some of our directors who will go into the, those systems and approve things on behalf of the district.
Great, thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Chair Diaz. We need a roll call, please, for the resolution.
Oh, there's, I underlined the word resolution, and the other one's not in this one. Can we have a roll call, please?
Again, Inspector Lallaberty?
Yes.
Inspector Arndt?
Yes.
Inspector Felton?
Yes.
Inspector Walker?
Yes.
Inspector Roche?
Yes.
Inspector Weber?
Yep.
And Chair Diaz.
Yes. So that motion carries. Here we go again. Do I have a motion to move the resolution to approve the MSHSL forward?
So moved.
Thanks.
Second.
Great. Any discussion?
Here again, annual approval that we do, and this is to participate in the Minnesota State High School League.
Great. Can you call the roll, please, Lisa?
Inspector Weber?
Here.
Inspector Lallaberty?
Yes.
Inspector Arndt?
Yes.
Inspector Felton?
Absolutely.
Inspector Walker?
Yes.
Inspector Roche?
Yes.
Chair Diaz?
Yes.
That's seven yeas.
That motion carries. Thank you. Looking for approval to approve the resolution for establishing dates for filing affidavits of candidacy. Do I have a motion for this resolution?
So moved.
Thank you, John.
Second.
Thanks, thank you. Any discussion?
Just making sure folks know that we have some seats open on the board this fall, and this will allow us to get that information moving forward. So if folks are interested, I know Vice Chair Roche had mentioned, it's only $2 to file your interest in running for board, and that is open August 2nd through Tuesday, August 16th at 5:00 p.m. So that's the window to get out there and put your $2 down, express your interest in serving on the board, which we all know is a wonderful thing to do and a great way to get back to the community.
Absolutely. And if you'd like to learn more about what it means to be a board member, there are seven people here who'd love to talk to you. Give us a call. Come to the meetings. All right. Lisa, will you please call the roll?
Inspector Roche?
Yes.
Inspector Weber?
Yes.
Inspector Lallaberty?
Yes.
Inspector Arndt?
Yes.
Inspector Felton?
Yes.
Inspector Walker?
Yes.
And Chair Diaz?
Yes.
Seven yeas.
Yay. Looking for a motion to approve, oh, here's another one, the resolution relating to the election of school board members and calling the school district general election. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Good job. Chris, perfect. Lisa, will you call the roll?
Inspector Walker?
Yes.
Inspector Roche?
Yes.
Inspector Weber?
Yes.
Inspector Lallaberty?
Yes.
Inspector Arndt?
Yes.
Inspector Felton?
Yes.
And Chair Diaz?
Yes.
That's seven yeas.
That motion carries. I'm looking for a motion to approve the 2022-23 Student Rights and Responsibilities Handbook.
So moved.
Second.
Wonderful. Any discussion?
Well, I'll jump in there again. This is our annual approval of the board for our Rights and Responsibilities Handbook, which I, I think sometimes people think is like our behavior handbook, but it's, it is much more than that, right? It is about the rights and responsibilities, is an important tool in helping us shape a very positive and supportive culture within our school. So yes, it does handle some things, like if you did this wrong, this might be a consequence you'd get, but we also always want to work towards that proactive and positive. How do we reteach, teach expectations, reteach, and this is a great tool to help us do that as well.
I think it also brings the family into...
Yeah.
...what's happening in the schools, or it should. Great. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? That motion carries. We're almost done here. Looking for a motion to approve the 2022-23 Independent Employee Agreement. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Great, thank you, John.
Second.
Thanks, Wendy. Jumping in there. All, any discussion? Good. All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, and here we are at the last one. I'm looking for a motion to approve the revised 2022-23 school calendar. Do I have a motion? Thanks, thank you.
Second.
Great. Any discussion?
It was just going to give an overview of what we brought forward last time.
Yes, good evening, board and South St. Paul community. I am Chad Schmidt, Director of Equity and Learning, and here with me is Principal Bree Toye. Principal Bree Toye and his colleague, Principal Starkman, presented to the board on June 13th about some proposed revisions to the 22-23 calendar, which was originally approved by this board in October of '21. So we're coming forward with those changes. In the handout, you can see some of the details of that, and I'll ask Mr. Bree Toye to explain some of those adjustments.
Thank you, Dr. Schmidt. Good evening to everybody. Just to reiterate, both Lincoln Center principal and myself had heard from staff over time about the four conference dates that we had set forth in the 22-23 schedule, and what an arduous schedule that is for staff the following days, basically. So what we did was we came with a inventive idea, we thought, was to keep the same amount of conference hours together for families and to remain flexible with families, and to also eliminate two of those, what ends up to be 12-hour days for staff. So we know that developing a school calendar is, when anybody says, do you want to be on the school calendar committee, everybody steps back, basically, right? And so we know it's a, it's a longer task, but we have been through some difficult times in education the past couple of years, and we're always looking for ways to find more time for our staff, and we believe that this offering would allow us to do that next school year. Now included in that offering are two, what we call flex days. And flex days are generally used in the event of severe weather, where our kids learn from home. On two of those dates, we would have flex learning days. We know that distance learning is still part of middle school kids' lives and high school kids' lives, and we do believe that this will be something that our kids will, also, it'll become part of their lives when they get older too. So those flex learning days may give us a chance to continue to work with our kids learning from home, learning from a distance. And in a parallel universe, it always gives us, it also gives us two other days for teachers to plan collaboratively together and to receive some professional development. So as we kind of vetted this topic of a minor change to the calendar, as we look forward towards the future, we just see a lot of positive benefits from it, from this year that we can possibly learn from, very much like we've learned from Win Wednesdays and some of the gains that we've seen there as well. So this is the elementary version of taking a step forward in that universe, okay? So I just thank you for your consideration.
And I'll do one more thing. Thank you, Mr. Bree Toye. So this is an impact for elementary and middle school. So it is all K through 8. There are two dates that change from what were originally planned as in-person student learning days to flex learning days. The first one is in November, the second one is in early March. So those are the two changes that impact families. The rest of it is mostly impacting internally around staff and the work we're doing with our educators. Any questions?
Thank you so much for the discussion, clarifying points. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. Great. And now we are finished with our business items, so we'll move on to our board member reports, any informational items. We'll start down on the end with Mr. Arndt.
I don't have anything tonight, Chair.
Great, thank you. Monica.
Just thank you to everybody who came to the Capoja Days Parade. It was super fun to see all the families out there and to hear all the little kids shout, you know, go pack go, before we threw candy out.
Just want to remind people of the Open Foundation's golf tournament that's coming up. There is a dinner, there is a tournament, and it's a great fundraiser that helps fund our students' athletics and activities that are such a strong part of what our school systems are.
Great, thank you. Nikki?
I just wanted to comment on the Peacemaker Golf Tournament and fundraiser that, that my spousal unit, John, has run now. I think this was the fifth year of it, and what a success. Over, I think there were 50 golfers, which was the most amount, and they cleared over $22,000, which is the most they've ever made.
I just wanted to comment on the Peacemaker Golf Tournament and fundraiser that, that my spousal unit, John, has run now. I think this was the fifth year of it. And what a success. Over, I think there were fifty golfers, which was the most amount, and they cleared over twenty-two thousand dollars, which is the most they've ever made. And so that means that the Capoja Peace Guide will be financed again for next year. And they, you know, they still have some bills to pay out of, out of what they raised. But it was just a great success, so much support from the people. I mean, former students and athletes of John's from back in the day and some staff members, guys that John went to college and high school with. I mean, it was just such a great turnout and people are just so thrilled that this is happening and that, you know, that this is going, you know, we're continuing to work on conflict resolution in the elementary and senior high. So anyway, thank you to anybody that participated or would like to participate next year because it's already in the planning. You can always contact John Lallaberty. Not me.
Okay, thanks. Chris?
The passion I've seen since our last meeting, the commencements, oh my gosh, it's just, I mean, it's said over and over at these meetings, but it's just the, the highlight of the year. And it's with everything that we have worked through as a board or as an administration or within the school buildings, it just makes it all worthwhile when you hit the graduate, the commencements. Celebration and such for those deserving students and obviously wish them the well, the best. The other one is the Capoja Days Parade that's already been mentioned. Just so much fun and just a fantastic community event. So those, the, the passion items that I wanted to speak to. And then also, since I live close to one of the schools, I comment during the school year about seeing all the kids with their little backpacks going off to the school and what a, how fun it is to, to see all that. Well, it's happening again with the Summer Learning Academy. Love the fact that that is an offering to the students and I'm so glad to see them taking part of it. So that's what, what I'm seeing and we'll move on to Wendy.
Yeah, I too want to say thank you to everyone who, who was at, at the parade Friday night and to thank all of our board members in attendance and, and the Kids Choice students that came to help hand out candy and everyone who participated, our driver with our float, everybody who was there. And also as a reminder, our community theater, the play Matilda, will be, will be happening in about a month from now, at the end of July. Tickets will, will be available on sale in, in a week or two, so you can order them online. And just want to wish everyone a safe and enjoyable holiday that's coming up next week, a week from today. And as a reminder, our July board meeting will be at the end of July, on the last Monday. So if anyone is interested in that day, it is the end of July for our meeting.
Thanks for the reminder. I would have been here all alone. Thank you. Great. Well, that is it for our agenda tonight, and I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the Monday, June twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-two meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Probably not. That motion carries. And the meeting is adjourned at six forty?
One.
One PM.